Rent to county, county.
Just not be hypocritical.
They used to actually do signers for the CRP at one point. And um.
I think we, I, I.
The current agreement includes a dollar amount that was when they had the contract.
Not all of them contract.
We're pretty sure.
Ten year, so.
We don't even have.
And all those payments.
No, I don't think.
And I just see it as illogical to include the really old language.
Your one higher wage is now.
To me, it does. It complicates it a lot. I mean, I don't know if the board just wants to.
More hours again because you don't.
Do a certain percentage to defendants of all, you know, everything that you receive CRP.
Coming in with dollar. Sure, and I want to do it in front of all.
I think.
We probably better do our thing.
Call it order. Good allegiance to the fight for the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. You all had a great weekend. If you didn't leave all your dirt rubber in Vegas. Okay. Everybody had a chance to review today's agenda. And you have, is there anybody has a conflict of interest with anything that we're going over? I don't think I see anything that should be objected. So Adam Auditor, would you please advise us with reading minutes?
February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Ty Rossberg, Chairman Presiding, members present for Schultz, Dozart, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden. Minutes of the previous meeting read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for Public Health Department and approved claims for all other departments. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the award HMA resurfacing project. County Road M fifty five from O Avenue to I Avenue to Inroads LLC in the amount of two million four hundred ninety eight dollars, three hundred. Two million four hundred ninety eight thousand, three hundred forty four dollars and thirty two cents. Engineer's estimate was two million, one sixty eight, eight twenty five and fifty cents. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozart, to approve the appointment Linda Mulbauer to Region Twelve COG Policy Council for a one-year term ending December thirty one, twenty twenty three. Voting I Schultz, Dozart, Rosberg, and Hayden abstaining due to conflict of interest, Mulbauer. Motion passed. It says unanimously. I'm not sure if unanimously is the proper language. I think it should just say motion passed. I agree because you abstained. Yeah, we'll get that unanimously off of there.
Thank you.
Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozart, to approve the hiring of Jason Blanc as a week commissioner at the pay rate of fourteen forty five an hour. Motion passed unanimously. A discussion was made by the Board about tax credit for volunteer emergency services provider. No action was taken at this time. A discussion was made with the Board with Brittany Ruba, FEH Design, via Zoom about the city center remodel design. No action was taken at this time. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hayden, to authorize County Attorney's Office to consult with an outside counsel on a county ordinance soil restoration. Discussion with the Board for initial exchange of proposals between Crawford County Sheriff and Teamsters, Local Five Five Four. During citizen input, there were citizens here to express their concerns about the economic impact, possible ordinances, and safety. Dolby DeWitt and Brittany Rockwell from Senator Ertz's office stopped in to introduce themselves on motion duly seconded the Board adjourned eleven fifty nine AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Just that one.
Just that one thing. We'll get that unanimously off of there. Good catch. Yeah, sign it because we'll just, we'll wipe it off of that copy and she'll get it off of the copy that goes to the paper.
I think Kulp is a matter of about like Kobe's. I think he spells it with a K.
Alright, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, look.
Ten years from now.
Does that, do we need to get that game down there correctly?
I don't think it's a big deal, but they're not my minutes, so.
I think he'll survive, probably.
Here's the current management contract. Do you want to see that? Sometimes it helps to.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Let's move on to our supervisors' reports. I see some notes to my left. I would like to have Craig's notes on Vegas more, but let's go ahead and start with you.
Those would be pictures on my phone and he cannot see them.
Okay, we've had a wellness center meeting on Wednesday night. And we had a representative from the YMCA there still yet coming to kind of see what's going on with wellness center. They have now got it reconfigured. The totals were for will be sixty seven thousand nine hundred feet, which is substantially smaller than originally planned. The estimated budget on that's eighteen million six hundred thousand. If you remember correctly, it was twenty three, twenty six, twenty four. So they've done a lot of revamping. They've taken the senior citizen, senior citizen center part of it out. They've taken the commercial kitchen part of it out. They revamped the soccer field a little bit. It's still going to be able to have the nine V nine and the two seven by seven, seven V seven areas.
No bleachers or anything, no?
There'll still be room, and that's very crucial to making sure that where they have room for spectators because when we're selling it as a possibility for tourism, and if there's no place to stand or sit, it's going to take that.
That aspect away.
Go away a little bit. They've kind of moved the condensed restrooms and locker rooms. They've moved the childcare portion of it to invite the lobby so that that person, the receptionist person can keep an eye on that. The gentleman from the YMCA said that they have a hundred and fifty kids in Atlantic come every day after school. And that's part of our revenue source to have after-school programs. So that's something that the big question is, you know, who's going to maintain it? Who's, you know, who's going to stack it? How is this all going to work? And that, it was kind of like, what came first, the chicken or the egg? We need to know the square footage, what's all going to happen. YMCA has to be able to make sure that, you know, we're going to get our fundraising and and really how it's going to look. It is a fact that the City of Dennison will own the building. DMU is going to help with utilities, and those are key parts of it. So it's down to sixty seven thousand nine hundred square feet. I do not remember what it originally was, but it's, it's down to that. So if you build it, how will we maintain it was kind of the question that's really going around. You want to make sure that that's been addressed. Mike Pardan was the one that kind of brought that, that up in particular.
So you won't have a kitchen now and like seniors, but will you still have like a concession area?
Concession, yes.
You'll probably make some money.
That's going to be right in the lobby when you first walk in. They did not pass out drawings. That was all on a, and so I can probably get that. But.
I'm just curious.
Oh, that's going to be. Yeah, so they've, they've made some progress on it. The thing that I kind of have a little problem with is how we got it to be so large and we spent this money for the architect. And now we've made it smaller. We have to spend more money for an architect and, you know, I, I, I wish we would have just kept it to where it was and, but we were still moving forward. Our people that are going out requesting money still feel very positive about the program. I did, I do have a form that everybody can take and sign, just kind of pledging if, if you want to donate, if you can donate it either afford by your family. There's a lot of people going out asking for that. I was going to print that out, but I'll maybe have it printed by the end of the meeting because printing is something I can't do very well. But it was a good meeting. You know, we're still really getting a lot of people that come. There's interest. Everybody that's on the committee still, you know, sometimes when you have a committee, certain people just drop off and they don't come anymore, but everybody's staying at the table and we all do agree that this is something that we really need in our community. They're going out to the smaller communities, asking for donations and, you know, hitting Sleswig-Munich and Elidow City to see how that's going to go. But I'm glad to see they've gotten it down. It still looks very appealing, very nice. They've changed it from that brick and mortar and it's going to be a steel building, which is going to say there were some corners now that, who was sitting next? Oh, the guy from Monogram, Eric. Just felt like we should square it off a little bit more instead of having, it kind of looks, goes like this. Maybe it'd be better if we squared it off. And so, yeah, things are moving along like that.
Steel, going to be steel or wood?
Steel.
Steel structure?
Senior citizens in our city works at that?
Yes. And they've been meeting with the senior citizens monthly to kind of, you know, make sure that that building, because there's some work that needs to be done to that building, but knowing that they're going to stay there now, that's going to become a project for them. And they're happy about that. They were very concerned about the parking at the new center. You know, they just love where they're at. There's plenty of parking. It's, they can get to it in there with their walkers and handicap. They don't have to worry about an elevator and they have the kitchen there. So maybe some improvements to that building might be the thing to do, but those are ongoing conversations that they have. Save their garage sale down there and all sorts of things. So other than that, I've been working, you know, kind of trying to keep city center moving a little bit, kind of really trying to get a good grip on how that meeting is going to go tonight, so we can have a good productive meeting. We'll all meet there at the Public Health at five, right? And then we'll head over. So don't be waiting at the city center because we're all going to be over there.
So Jean, could I just ask, ask you a question? As far as, I think it was a concern of mine that I brought before, also about the continuing running of the community center. And you said Mike Pardan brought that up. So is the YMCA, are they in a possible solution as to who's running it or why is, what's the YMCA's connection to this project?
They would, they need to get a performer to kind of say what they will. The building will always be ours to worry about, you know, capital improvement, roof and HVACs and things like that.
So we would pay YMCA a fee to run that? Or how does that work?
Rent it from us, is my understanding.
So they would pay us?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding.
Right, the city.
Right, yeah, not, not the city.
It's all under the city.
City, but nothing.
Is there any agreements with the county and city that they wanted in?
Well, the word twenty eighty agreement has been brought up, but never, right, it's just been mentioned and that's never even asked me if we'd be interested, but they did say, well, we could do a twenty eighty and there's just like silence.
For what?
Or like we do with the imagination station that everybody would put some money in the kitty every year to keep the you know, because that, when that roof goes bad, that's a big roof. When, you know, flooring goes bad, that's a lot of flooring.
I think the can of worms that can be opened with that is, we have, Manel has a wellness center.
Right.
So that's why they turn over, I mean, we have served all the county.
Crickets.
Yeah.
But, you know, the reason for having meetings is to throw out ideas and to have the conversations and it's a great question, who's going to maintain the building?
Is your roof a south-facing roof or east-west?
Oh, let's see when they changed it. Let me think about it. The it's going to be facing the, what the aquatic, where the aquatic center is, so it's going to be facing east. No, 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 it's going to be facing south.
So it'd be facing, I just was, has, has anybody checked into grant money for?
Oh, absolutely.
Solar stuff on, solar roof?
But they've got, our, our grant committee is on fire. They are.
I'd just check into that since there's a push right now.
It could be through USDA.
It seems like it'd be kind of interesting. You know, they got shingles that are actually solar. Now, I don't know, that might create a big, a very high maintenance rate. So, I mean, maybe you don't want it, but it's, would be something worth doing. Just a thought.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I feel good. You know, we still go back and refer to our questionnaire that was asked and that penetration of, you know, what people want. We're really trying to keep it in line with what people said they wanted. So we, you know, that where a lot of this eighteen million dollar expense comes from is that level, that upstairs walking area. You know, we had the walking area on the first level around the basketball court. That would save a lot of money, but most people are excited about having that be an elevated walking path that you can walk even if kids are down there playing basketball. And the example.
Now I have an elevator though.
Well, that's, there's your expense, you know, and so if you have ever been in Harlands, their walking path walks around all of, you know, and you do have to kind of, even when I went there, we had to wait to cross through because people were walking. They're walking around and then kids are throwing basketballs, then you have different issues with that. So kind of a top priority for the majority of people that have committed to donating just really want the elevated walking path. And so that has stayed. So, so they've done a lot of good work. They're just focused on getting, fulfilling the needs of the citizens of the county and making sure that it's welcoming and open to everyone and kind of fit everything in. So it was a long meeting, but it was a good meeting.
So is there a timetable in place as to what they're hoping to maintain?
Ah, let me think here. Not at that particular meeting. I don't believe we discussed, but everything is just, the sooner we can get it done for some of the grants there are. And so that, right now, they're questioning, everybody on the committee gets their forms in for what they're going to donate so that they have a hundred percent partition, participation from the members on the board because that shows really well. Grant application.
It has to be fair. It's to happen before twenty six, otherwise there's seven hundred fifty thousand dollar contribution.
That's right. Absolutely, absolutely.
We have to have that money spent by that.
You're exactly right.
Boy, you know, if you listen to the news, there's people talking about pulling whatever is used so far, pulling it back. Beds.
Imagine that.
Imagine that. Well, uh, we'll, we'll have a little bit more of it.
I don't know how much gravity. They gotta get some more money for the Ukraine anyway.
Otherwise, you know, always, you know, pipeline conversations going on. Talking about ordinances, wanting to make sure that we are staying focused on, there's no deadline for ordinances, but by the hearing in October, they'll need to know all the parcels for the route. Otherwise, it'll be harder to enact the ordinance for them. And that came from Miguel at the uh, what are, it's a dot org, Iowa.gov. So I'll pass this around just so you can see what the answers to to some of those questions were, but they did contact Collins' office and ask that when he has the conversations with Tim or whatever attorney he chooses, that, because that would be questions that I'd like to ask. But then going to ISAC on Wednesday, we'll have some great conversations with other counties and Derek Cashman will be there. So I'm kind of, you know, okay, let's wait until after. But that'll give us a chance to visit the other counties that are going through the same thing and really get to hear the meat and potatoes on this whole thing. So I'm looking forward to, to, to days in the morning. Get in the trenches with what's really going on with him that donate and things like that, or this, you know, legislature that came out and got out of Steve Holt's department, but then Jason's department didn't sign itself, kind of a little bit of standstill there, but the timing factor is going to be all that. And if we're going to do an ordinance or if we're going to do anything, we probably should be really working on it. So. It turns up.
Okay, are you done, Jean? Sorry, I was reading your notes, sir.
That's all right.
Colonel Bauer?
Sure. Um, I actually have a couple off what you said with eminent domain. A lot, I had a ISAC legislative update last week. And eminent, eminent domain, of course, is brought up again. House File five sixty five passed. That's the ninety percent sign up, local zoning ordinance supervisors have a right to file for soil damage. Would I be a little more in-depth? ISAC is registered in favor of that. The one that didn't pass that you brought up was Senate side, which was a two-thirds voluntary sign up. That would be Jason Schultz's side. Jason voted against that. That bill failed.
He said that there are people there on both sides, pro and con, or that they're, they just didn't like some things in there?
We are, Carl Vanderwerth, the District Three President for ISACs, reached out to me and a few others. He set up a meeting with Governor Reynolds to discuss eminent domain and the implications of how it would affect us and just kind of have boots on the ground of locals presenting to her of where we were at with things. I'd asked Jean if she would go along with me. I think it's Thursday afternoon. I'll get the times as we're going out to ISAC together. So that'd be a good meeting, at least to go right to the source and say, here's our concerns.
Here's our concerns.
And.
Could be more excited about that.
Yeah, I think that'll be a good meeting. So we'll see.
One of these bills the governor wasn't in favor of.
Yeah.
Is it Steve's bill or the one that didn't make the Senate?
It's going to be vetoed is kind of what came out.
And that's, we'll get it, we'll get to ask those questions, which I'm looking really, I'm looking forward to that.
Why? What didn't she like about it?
Right. Okay. And I think it's a good, good way too for us, rural counties to really voice our, our opinion and our, our thoughts on, on this whole deal.
County is directly going to be affected by it, so.
A lot of our other updates are going to sound repetitive because I've been reporting on them for the last couple of weeks. Comp board bills, House File three fourteen passed. That's the one where supervisors can dissolve the comp board altogether. But there's language that supervisors would have to follow back to blue. ISAC is registered against that because I brought up there's no defining language to what actually is back to blue.
And when does it stop?
Right.
If, if ever.
We already did.
So, I mean, it's kind of, we're going, let's, let the supervisor get rid of the comp board, but you have to follow this law. That's great. So it's, it leaves a lot of laws in the air juggling. The Senate version of the comp board bill was, that's the one where two supervisors would sit on the comp board, appoint two other ones. We'd have to show your work. It also has, you'd have to back the blue. Not really sure still, then nobody could answer that, not even the ISAC Jamie or Lucas of what exactly that means. But that is the one where when you show your work, whatever comes out of it is.
Shouldn't they define, don't you think they should define that in this bill?
Well, I brought that up.
Binding to the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, so whatever, because they're saying, well, you have two members on the board and you appoint two others, whatever comes out of comp.
So how, how big a board date would that be? I mean, it's, it's not just a four-person board.
No, it'd be two supervisors, two appointed members, and then then probably three others. So that'd be a seven.
So all the elected officials don't get to have a representative on the comp board anymore?
I'm not sure on that. I wouldn't.
What I read of that, it didn't sound like.
No. So that's.
So which one, there's one of them that you all can lower at different rates, right? Is that the one that passed or not? Do you know?
Oh, because both of them would be what comes out of it, I think is set.
But I think what's different about.
Meeting's over.
It's done.
But other counties don't automatically do the exact same thing. So there's where kind of some of that difference comes from too. You know, I think years ago, you guys used to, could do auditor, could get ten percent, the treasurer could get five percent.
Well, the comp board can recommend that.
They can, yeah, yeah.
I, I think the state can don't, I'm not here, is there something? We don't know if it's not spelled out.
They're refined at all.
What, you know, those parameters are. I mean, it gives you guidelines, but where does it stop? And, you know, we're still trying to work within the budget that we have and that budget isn't necessarily a poke or a lint county. It just a lot, a lot of things up in the air on that, but.
Take your pick of any rep or any senator down there. None of them.
They use Pope County as well. The treasurer in Pope County gets a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year. So we recommend. And that's their work. We don't agree with their work.
You're stuck because you have two, two supervisors on the board. Granted, this is just the Senate files version and you have the House file. And, you know, they have to, they both passed out, but they have to still come to agreement on what the actual ending bill will be. But it's still, once again, to me, it feels like it takes a little bit of control out of our hands, even though we have two supervisors on the comp board, if that bill passed. It's. The work is where, the, the work is where they're trying to say. That's the deciding all factor. EMA levy, House File one twenty six, that passed out. That's for EMA Commission, House Certified its own levy. There's been a lot of, there's a lot of pushback on that one. That's moved the Ways and Means Committee. They said, Lucas said that there wasn't a lot of appetite to pass that out of Ways and Means, so that could end there.
Could not make that phone.
Supervisor districts, this doesn't really affect us, but that's, all counties over sixty thousand population would have to redistrict and change from a Plan Two to, counties move to a Plan Three district. And I think Plan Two would be out altogether. You'd have to be a Plan One or Plan Three.
Oh, they're saying Plan Two is out?
Yeah.
So you all are Plan One. You are not voted in by districts.
Yeah, right.
And you don't have to live in a certain district. So Plan Three is a complete opposite of that.
And that's what they're pushing all those bigger counties to be.
By district and certain, you know, you have to live in those districts. They're not a thing.
The, the House File two eighty one hasn't been passed out yet, but the Senate filed that version has. The rumblings a little bit on this one is, okay, it's targeted towards the bigger counties or in Iowa. Not, there's, there's a lot of them. I think there's eight or ten maybe.
Right.
But they're saying that the county's already voted on who's in it. But it's another way of the state telling those counties, well, you have to district or have to change its plan to follow these rules.
I know the auditors are in line to give the voters the, the right to say how they want their county.
Exactly.
To be voted on.
We don't need the state telling us how, right, our county should vote.
Again, yeah.
And then another, I guess, we're impacting a lot of the rural counties. So what, where's this? Okay, if they do this towards the bigger urban areas, what are they going to come into ours next and change?
Right.
And tell us how we have to vote.
Right.
So we're pushing back on that a little bit. Let's see here, the HHS ominous bill, the Senate File four seventy one passed out a rule, rules to that changes where elected officials will only have forty nine percent of control on our mental health boards. Not great because we're the elected officials. It's our skin in the game. You're going to, you're going to be trumped by a majority that are non-elected officials deciding how mental health should be.
Who puts those people on that board?
Well, that's all, right now, it would be where we appoint the supervisors. And then Jean is more your wheelhouse, but the other board members that are not elected.
Uh, you know, we have the CEO of Plains Area as a voting member and just some of the different providers, their CEOs and, you know.
I think currently the makeup is what elected officials and.
Would be a supervisor from each county. And then there's some of the provide, I think there's.
So there's a higher percentage of elected officials right now.
They would switch that, so we'd have only four, up to forty nine percent. That's not good for supervisor elected officials to lose that control.
Right.
Because like I said, you have none.
Because on that board.
Making bigger decisions for our regions.
Supervisors, it's unusual for everybody to agree because there's, every county has a different situation. So it's not always a unanimous. And then, you know, you have Kim from Plains Area who's a voting member. I can find that.
But don't, don't I remember Cecil having a, wasn't there a big struggle about how to make sure that supervisors stayed in control of that before?
Was it? There was talk that we had the super CEO funding it.
We were funded.
Right, right. Then when it went to the state, there were questions why we even need to be there because we're not making the decisions that we used to make and it's, it's mandated to us, you know.
They got to keep you close because you're going to get it back.
Well, and that, and that, they, they did not want to lose the local input on it. So they said, no, 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 nothing's going to change. It's just all going to stay the same. But even right now, we did not have a full board meeting in February because there just wasn't enough on that agenda that needed to be discussed. So, you know, there, it's already, I'm seeing a little bit, you know, we had two in January because we really needed to get the budget kind of done. But once we get that budget. But, once we get that budget, and the budget's mandated, I mean.
Right, you have to provide those core services. Um, part of that core service, it goes back to the funding, you know, we're hoping for a ten percent carry forward, it may be more like five. What it said, there's sixty-three million dollars across the state regions that are sitting in their coffers. The argument from our side is, we need those funds to start up programs, that's expensive, we need those funds to pay for, you know, to keep our payroll going. Um, they wanna lower that, because they're looking at, well, sixty-three million dollars across the state. Now apples, apples for me to.
If it was, if they were.
Across the state, that's not a lot of money though.
Right.
Uh, would be better, but we better do payroll, and the money's sitting there, they haven't quite given it to us, and we have to do payroll, uh, so.
The state wants that number brought down, they don't like having sixty-three, or some of them in the state, I should say. Um, the good things is that, you know, the idea of, of the HHS ominous bill here is that you have more beds available, which would free up space for our deals and things like that. And there's things that try to target helping mental health, but there's a lot of, a lot of local control that we would lose.
You know, my wheelhouse can help me still.
Sixty-three thousand dollars a county is all that.
Not much, not much.
And you consider Pulp's and that, or?
Then, uh, one of the last things that was covered was the government reorganization bill, that sixteen hundred page. Bill that was coming out that Reynolds put forward to condensed governments.
Oh.
That was passed, wasn't it?
Well, there were, I'm sorry, came out, came out of funnel.
Yeah, came out of the.
Um, right. There's some things that would change, like community-based corrections boards would move to an advisory board only. And what I took that as, and I have to do some more digging into this, Kyle, that Cherokee and even west, central Iowa. Uh, you would no longer be a board member on that, you would be an advisory role. And that the state would take that over and condense it with.
Condensing how?
They don't pay for anything.
Right.
You're squeezing it over here, and it just bulging out over there.
It'd actually be HHS, the state would have HHS take those boards over. Um, and I, I'll do some more digging into this one, though.
They changed it from DHS to HHS, it gave them a broader scope of, of what they can kind of hold into.
But it was, it was said in our meeting, that some in the state think that the state HHS could more efficiently govern those boards.
Good luck.
I know that, that's a concern, certainly, I mean, I'm on that third judicial district of the Department of Corrections, and they had a meeting on Friday, and I told them I wouldn't be able to attend, and I'm hoping to. I told, I think it's Maureen Hanson, is the lady that's. Uh, maybe the director for the, for the district, and I told her that I'd like to come up to Sioux City and meet with her individually, so we're gonna try to get together either this week or next week for me to get up there and meet with her. Because I know that's a concern, that's been there, they've been a. That's been the talk of every email that I've had, has been about that reorganization and us becoming an advisory board. Uh, not an overseeing board, I think she would, I mean, I think she's concerned, because she wouldn't have a job, I don't believe anymore. Um, it would be taken over by the HHS.
Been a concern all along, what that's really gonna mean to the people that have jobs, if that becomes, because they do not wanna become state employees, even if they, you know, so it's just, it's. In its role, and just almost exactly the way we worried that it was going to go, and we were assured in the very beginning. Because we talked about it for a year before the state actually took over, what that was really gonna look like, who's gonna lose jobs, how much control locally would we lose, and it's coming to fruition.
Right, right.
So, and just above.
Feels like a little bit more of our authority locally is being chipped away at.
Well, we need to find some other stuff for them to do down there.
And then, uh, I guess the other things I had, Ty brought up to me, I'm gonna bring this up to the board of directors meeting on Wednesday about having maybe a solar session of understanding how solar could impact. Um, our counties, no different than wind turbines, and just maybe floating some ideas of what we should do to be proactive on preserving our county and our road infrastructure, and giving the landowners rights while at the same time not. Hindering economic development.
Just make us smarter.
Yeah, right, just to be, more to be aware, I think that's a great idea. Just like wind turbines or pipeline, just, I think there's nothing on the horizon.
Instead of learning on the go, we can be a little ahead of the curve here, that's kind of my theory.
So, I'll bring that up, and then, um, of course, uh, Ty will let you cover, um, the negotiation, we, we did have a meeting.
I have one more quick question, so I was looking for my notes on it. Uh, were you, are you referring to a governor's commission for mental health, is that what they called it? Because I, I had some notes from a meeting that we had a while back. I don't know how they were, were gonna change it.
This was just said, government reorganization plan, sixteen hundred page bill.
Okay.
Community-based corrections, move to only advisory board, HHS take over those boards. That's all.
So, I wonder if that's what that's talking about. Ask the governor's commission for. We gotta pass that before I go.
Involved.
Right, okay, so, um, thank you, I'm, that's all I got.
Good, thank you, Kyle, sir?
I'm doing just conservation board, Wednesday, this Wednesday night, not last Wednesday night, so.
Are you going down to ISAC?
Uh, I will go Thursday, if we don't have a disaster cabin, so.
Oh, okay.
The kids are college and.
You're on your own. You and Christie are cabin alone?
Apparently. So, I plan on driving down Thursday and coming back Thursday, to be around that, uh, and I'm just working on this land management agreement. To solidify our stake in the cops or the CRP. We need to get that, but Martha's reviewed it, she's got some blanks that need filled in, and, uh. I was about to Terry this morning, and she's already been in contact with Eric out there, but say, office, trying to get the numbers that we need, and then we just needed to. Really, we need to decide if we wanna keep it still split of our share, like fifty percent with Peasants Forever, or do we wanna change that? Uh, I don't know, they seem to be doing our pretty good job of managing it, if we, if we push them, you know. They did clean all the trees up and such out at the county farm, so I'm not against leaving it the same, it just means that as a board, they decided that.
You wanna do that?
But I know we did make an arrangement with the Peasants Forever to pay for the majority of that trees to.
We did sixteen thousand.
Because they were out of the money, but then I see that on Facebook where they just gave a bunch of money to streeting sports.
I seen that.
Which is a, it's a good deal, it's just like, well, if we were, you're out of money when we needed to pay for trees, we got money for that, so. I'm not, it's neither here nor there, but we'll just hold the money until we get our share back, and they were fine with, Peasants Forever was fine with that, so.
So, we paid Peasants Forever to manage it, is that how that works?
Right.
Yeah.
They have planted, um, nesting areas and, right?
Yeah, and when it comes time to re-enroll, you know, Eric, oh, there's this, you gotta clean all these trees up, I call K R, K R says, I'll take care of it.
So, they, Peasants Forever took care of that, and they did, did not submit us a bill for what it cost, or?
No, there was a company that took the trees down, it cost sixteen thousand dollars.
And we paid that.
We paid that.
They managed, they made the phone call.
Can't we do that?
Yeah.
You know, and they, and they've done, I think, over the years, I can't think back, but they've done other things, they manage the, the burning and such of it, to stay in compliance with the CRP contract. But, just like everything else, you kind of forget about things until all. The trees didn't come quite over.
Can you remind me again how many acres our county farm is, does anybody know that?
It's a hundred and twenty-eight rental acres, tillable ground, and I think there's twenty, according to this, maybe twenty-seven point five in CRP, so. Hundred fifty-five, correct?
Short one sixty.
And I'm not sure.
More or less, that's a.
It just isn't the right time to bring it up, but people have asked me, you know, over the years, why do we own a farm? And wondering why we don't sell that, why we're, you know, have a farm, and I really don't know the answer, I know how we ended up with it, but I don't know.
There was, uh, you know, every county had a farm.
Yep, yep, I remember.
It was kind of where the.
Did you?
Indigent, and, uh, through that, some counties sold theirs, a lot of them did not.
A lot of them didn't, okay.
Dallas County, I know that's because that's where my boy, D Mac, has their egg stuff at that farm.
Okay.
Uh, county farm. Uh, we always kept it as a bargaining tool, if we needed, while we, our landfill was being filled up, then if we needed to trade that for another chunk of ground someday. But we are at a point now that maybe the question is, why keep it, or why not sell it?
How, how do we have, get that conversation going, you know, would?
Sounds to me like you're starting it.
Well, uh, some people wonder, you know, because we use the, what we rent our, uh, county farm for, that's kind of what the other, uh, people that rent farms, they look at, wait to see what we're gonna rent ours for, and then that's the number that is used by different landowners around.
Some of the year is only three dollars and five cents an acre, they didn't use that, the decimal point type one newspaper.
Lots, lots, I, I.
Man, I love getting you there.
So, I, I, I totally understand that, but there's also the thought that I expressed, maybe we need to redo how we, uh, rent it. Do we do a beginning farmer, or the thing that has been bouncing in the back of my head here is. Uh, I forget what they're calling it, where all the schools are. What the heck is the word of it, Nelson, or if you make value, they're all starting to work together to bring like college-type classes.
Maybe like an egg class there?
I'm trying to think, why not, maybe, maybe a portion, we could do that some way, or, or even just rent it to the local FFAs or something, or, I don't know.
Put it on the agenda, so we can have an open discussion, and, uh, can farmers possibly come in and give their opinion about the county owning a farm that we ran out for?
We wanna sell it, we better get selling it.
Well.
Not gonna say, we should have sold it a year ago.
Sorry, it just, it just seemed like a time, because it just was brought up to me not that long ago.
With interest going up.
I think to sell it and not have anything to do, just to dump those funds back into our fund balance, seems a little bit, uh, off what we should do, and I think.
I think we should have a project for it.
So that, if we did ever go down that road, that, hey, this is what we're gonna use it for, that's gonna benefit our county for years to come. Not just the one and done that we sold it.
You know, maybe, maybe like I said, maybe we just revise, we don't rent it to the highest bidder here.
Or write it, or go around that way.
We go some, we find a different route that.
I don't mind that education.
Maybe establish some education or something, you know?
I, I think maybe it'd be a good idea to put it on the agenda to have an open discussion about it, so.
But I, I know there's a number of counties that have gotten, have sold their county farm, like Carroll County did, but they also, I think, put a lot of that money towards their new jail.
Yeah.
Um, so there's things that the counties have done to, you know, improve their county and not.
We have the, some things we could do to improve our county.
Perfect sense, so.
Well.
It'd be just a short, one and a half million probably would get out of it.
How much?
One point, something, one point three, four, five somewhere, with just an estimate of what it would bring, I don't think it would bring top dollars, but it'd bring good money.
We can start brainstorming and.
And I wonder if it would be more appropriate to, if it'd be under the guidelines, to go in a closed session to discuss what those avenues could be.
I think we can have an open discussion in regards.
Or maybe until you get that.
But once we start.
Start talking dollars.
Go down a different road, then we have to try and go in a closed session.
Well, I think it's something, you know.
I think to have it out there where it would be open discussion, where folks could give their ideas to, would probably be important.
Well, I think it's another one of those things that fall into the category, the answer is, why do we do it? Because that's what we've always done it, and I think it's a good time to really evaluate, have we always been doing it, you know, things have changed a little bit since we started doing it that way.
Could you look on the, how long the counties own that farm?
Yep.
See where we purchased it.
At one point in time, we, we sold off the actual house.
Right, right.
So.
Would county have to pay capital gains?
I have no idea.
Because we own it.
That's a good question, though.
Whenever.
It's a great question.
It's a great question.
Or are we, I don't know if we're under that, I don't know, vision or not, no idea. Or if you get, have to do like a ten ninety-one.
See, everything we do brings up more questions.
We've made money out of it, so, that's a good question.
Yeah, right, usually those ten thirty-one exchanges, you have to be like for like.
Right.
Meaning if you sold farmland, you have to buy farmland.
Yep.
You can't sell farmland and buy an apartment complex, or, you know, get that ten thirty-one exchange, right, so that, that's an interesting question.
Right.
Good morning.
We need to ask Colin or Martha that.
We should put that on the agenda, but I think it's a good conversation.
Let's have it.
I agree.
Maybe, Mr. Fergan.
I mean, because we. Because I, I think Dave makes a good point, because if we've owned it, the county's got a lot of good out of that for a good number of years, so if we sell it, we should, in turn, take that money and do something good for the county over a good number of years.
If we have a break, I'll go to the recorder and see if she can look that up, and see if she can find how that.
Probably all that sense, county wasn't established.
I think it's, I think we're gonna be amazed how long we've had it, so.
I think we'll be amazed, right, it wasn't. Have somebody like the county money.
Conversations that we keep right to the minute you walk in.
That's all I am, I really do.
So, we'll see that on the agenda next week probably, so we need to get our research and our conversations done by next week, correct?
Did you have anything else, Mr. Schultz?
I didn't know.
Okay, Craig, you'll have to come back to you.
I don't have anything.
I'm doing that.
Ben?
Yes.
Usually when you show up, we're kind of short, so we might be able to get back to our stuff after.
What do you got?
Go ahead, what do you got?
Uh, just a poll, yeah, maybe, just a few things, uh, to approve, uh, I'll, uh, make a gravel purchase from, uh, Stratford gravel for, both from Kate's pit, as well as, uh. A different pit over by, over in Carroll County there, I can't remember the name of it.
Swilly?
Stratford?
Sparks?
Sparks, there you go.
Seven fifty a ton there?
Yeah.
And eight, eight oh three a ton at, at Kate's pit?
Yep, yep, fifty thousand from Kate's, and twenty-five thousand from Sparks there, is kind of what he's looking at, and.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve those two purchases at that price.
Alrighty, Mr. Mulbar makes motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Hayden makes the second.
No, no, this is for the twenty-four delivery period, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So, is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, and entertain, well, I already got the motion, so, all in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Right.
Pose no, chair votes aye. Motion to approve the next.
Ben, how many, I mean, this is just a portion, this ain't the Halles' pits at all, you know.
No.
It is also Stratford's.
Just Stratford's, right, I'm just, you know, you see all the, the, the road situations the way they are.
Chair to sign here, or is Paul signing there?
Always don't, you know, what, what do we use in that year, it depends every year, I mean, there's. There's seventy-five thousand ton just from Stratford, so what are we getting from Halles?
We usually spend about one and a half, two million on gravel, divided by eight dollars, well, plus trucking.
Bottom half, that'd be Paul, I guess. And then our white.
The board to sign the back of it then.
They sure can, this is, none of the way, this is just.
This is just the strap.
I do like that.
So, we get, I'm not sure what you got, about another half as much again, probably on the Halles, but sure, not more.
I imagine, I guess. I think we got more on the Halles last year than they did.
What I like about Stratford goes, fifteen percent added blend of white rock with it, that really seems to help with.
I don't know, but I mean, really, what they're, they're not exactly doing the sitting process like, uh, like Halles are doing, but they're, they're gonna end up mixing it with the. Mixing it with the blackstone, and trying to get close to our gradations, and, uh, the gradations, we were watching that a little bit, uh, the Halles materials already made, and, uh. When they, uh, when they sent us their gradations, I, I think it was kind of, well, we didn't really get a chance to do our own testing, but they sent us all their gradations, so that, what, uh, what they've made, and.
Do we, do we typically periodically just pull a can out to check that gradation, or not?
Yeah, usually we try to send a guy every day that they're making, uh.
Because we got somebody that takes notes anyway?
What's that?
Don't we have somebody that takes tickets anyway, or don't we do that anymore?
They send, uh, they're, they're. Grading us, or, yes, so, we always have tickets coming out of there, whatever we take out, but, uh, uh, when they're making it, we usually try and do our own, you know, quality control testing, uh, you know, at least. Maybe get one gradation a day from when they're, when they're making it, but, uh, I, I'm not sure, uh, what happened, they, the material's already made, they sent us their list of gradations, they do their own gradations as well, but we like to. Verify it and do our own quality control, I don't know, a lot of counties do that, but, uh. Verify it and do our own quality control, I don't know, a lot of counties do that, but uh. But we uh, we always kind of try to keep them on their toes in that respect, hey, we're watching, yeah, and uh. So.
I do appreciate that Stratford, so you're um. Here's your pile. They'll they'll get it dug out and we might have a lot, it's just there for us to use as we need it.
Yep.
And Hallet is not that way.
Get it out of here.
Yeah, it's they make it, we take it. I don't really care about it and I respect that.
Am I supposed to sign the front of these or is that Paul? I didn't hear the answer, I heard her ask you.
Uh I believe she's standing back.
Yeah, I did, yeah, she did do that, but I didn't know if you needed me to sign her here.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure. Paul signs it or you. I assume Paul, I guess.
Yeah. He needs a different? I'm I'm a home call away. Okay.
We got an access application, uh Hemon and Jericho, you got both set there. Insurance and uh. Both will be applying dust control, yeah, this year's.
Did you have a lot of people pick up Heffron?
I don't know what the percentage is, but quite few, yeah.
Is that the dust that control of you'll put in front of their places out the country?
And we apply that then, is that how that works? See, if they apply it.
Yep, they.
So if a citizen wants that, they just contact the county to put it on, or they contact these people directly?
We uh, they contact them directly, we give them their information. We'll get a list from from these guys of everybody who's gonna have it done, and we'll shape up the road ahead of them. Before they apply it, we give them a timeframe when we want to apply it, uh some specifics on uh what they're gonna have. What we require them to put down.
Say somebody new, just say myself. Could still call the engineer's office and say, you would give them contact information for Heffron or Jetro, right?
Right, right.
And it's on our website as well, so that's right direct most people.
But we only, correct me if I'm wrong, God, we only approve certain vendors to do this.
Right.
So that we don't have a hundred different people just going out on our roads and putting dust control down.
That's right, please just have one, now we have two.
Yeah, we need a little bit of organization to it to get. You know, different people doing it different times and trying to really, you know, to get the roads shaped up for. Numerous people, we just say, here's the timeframe you're gonna do it, here's what you're gonna put down.
Only if you don't get caught.
Yeah.
We did it down a little while, then last year, what, seven, eight miles?
Yeah, that was.
Pretty nasty.
Pretty.
I made a motion to approve uh. Twenty twenty three dust control agreement with Jericho and Heffron Services Incorporated.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Schultz, second. Mister Dozark. Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, chair votes aye. And on to the next one.
Look, uh top one there, it's on the back of the sheet.
We have a motion to approve contract bonds and give insurance for the HMA project uh. Are uh. I've been looking through this, I. Design is a the the performance bond.
And there's performance bond in order?
It looks to be yes. Yes, the, I don't know how much Paul discussion, Paul's out with you on as far as the specifics on the project, you know, the numbers or what what project came to be, but. Two point five five out, two point five million for the HMA.
That's what we approved last, that part, yeah.
Yep.
No, this is where we're improving the bonds.
Contract bonds and certificate of insurance. So I'd entertain a motion for that.
Make that motion?
Second.
And Mister Mulbauer seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all all in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else why is going on in the world of secondary roads?
Believe you got a.
Are you ready for the snow?
Yeah, right up for it, don't know what we're fully proposed to get, but uh it sounds like starting to have make get a little bit of mix overnight here, uh might get a little bit nice and whatnot.
Getting very many calls on roads losing the bottom.
They start slowing down. Yeah, there's still some, and uh especially around the detour there, uh where people are finding their way around, uh turn rope there and uh. There's some calls, that's looking really good, I keep on driving about every day to see how, case somebody would call, and it's like, it's really improved. In the week since they. The guys are doing a good job, I think.
Which ones that?
The one on Gloria Street.
Yeah, where people finding a way around the bridge replacement up there.
Yes.
Which I wrote there. I got after that, yeah, here, go check it out myself, it goes up there, but. I think things are starting to finally dry up a little bit, uh just in time for the next round of moisture. Well, it'll go away too.
The uh, I'd I'd actually went out and drove.
Yep.
The old, the going south on what is it, one hundred and twentieth, that burn, one twentieth?
Oh, yeah.
One ten? On nothing, cause I'd had a couple calls on that, and that one, they'd been putting rock out there, but it was still pretty squishy.
Where's that?
One tenth going south of one forty one.
Okay.
Yeah, but it that was last week, so.
Yeah, last week it was, the roads are still. Bottoming up a little bit, we were getting quite a few calls last week.
I don't know what she did, she made tremendous, I took S Avenue home, went some calls on S Avenue, and just hitting those key spots where it was, you know, rutted up. It made a world of difference.
Yep, yep, and we take every call, we we look at every every everything that folks calling about, you know, we. And uh trying to address everything, but uh, yeah, they they were just running ragged, you know, whereas the guys are trying to fix. Fix cross boil areas and uh we're and uh. But things are drying up, and I think they're getting up pretty good out there, actually, yeah, like I said, it doesn't time for the next snow, but uh. We'll get that off the roads and uh hopefully everything will stay dried up, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it'll be for for longer. Those will get checked.
Who? I'll be on or about what.
It will be on to the next thing, so. That's all I have.
Thanks. Well, thanks, Ben. Certainly appreciated. Good work out there. I know it's a challenge right now. Seems like the most, even when they're calling and. Kind of complaining, they just ask, is there something we can do to that, I mean, it isn't somebody saying that you're doing terrible job, I mean, they they know we're dealing with a.
A lot of problems are very understanding that it's just the time of year, they're just pointing out, hey, you got a bad area here. And uh see if we.
I think we're.
Yeah. And like I said, that's what I said for an hour myself, and we go actually look at it, see if there's truly a problem before we just say, yeah, we'll come out and go rock now, yeah, we wanna. There's also a lot of worse areas out there than some that.
So I think you're doing a good job.
Really do. Yeah.
But again, construction is carrying on up there, and I think they.
I haven't been over it, I was gonna go that way this morning, I, oh. Took a little longer chores than I anticipated to, I'm gonna drive around that way. See the grains in here anyway.
What's that?
I see the grains in here, there must be. I don't know, bridge door out, huh?
I think they pretty well got the structure out, so and uh. Yeah, Brent uh mentioned he's gonna go up and give them some stakes for their uh. Abutments and uh whatnot, so they're. I said they must have it pretty well out, so up there to that point, so. Uh I was gonna go up and check it out myself, so I haven't been up there today or yesterday yet, so.
Heard last year we might have it done quick.
They're after it.
Maybe we can have a ribbon cutting, as Paul said to me last week, I'm talking ribbon cutting on the fourth of July, and we all drink some beer and shoot some fireworks off. And then. He always said that.
And then help sort of get his cattle back.
Down city on the Kenwood Highway, the city, down city had a deal, and actually had had a little party on that.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. Cool.
I can manage to sit on my back and watch that one.
Yeah, and we could do like when they open the Golden Gate Bridge, have band and everything out there. The rickets all star band. Bring an elephant across it. See, it holds it, yeah.
Or not.
Thanks, Ben. Okay. On to, we got fifteen minutes to burn.
There we go.
No, it's a ten o'clock, it is a ten o'clock.
You have two minutes to burn.
Well, you're just trying to skip stuff.
I know, trying to expedite the speeding.
Well, I'm trying to get it done anyway for.
Old man glasses out, they glasses. Oh, man. Borrow mine. Borrowed jeans last week.
He did borrow mine last week.
I didn't, everybody could read that paper, so I really don't know. On what Dave and I discussed with the uh sheriffs.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We just didn't, it didn't come to agreement yet.
Nope. Wouldn't be. Still working on it. On the with the sheriff's union.
Yeah.
What's that?
Wouldn't you meet again?
Um when they uh.
The nothing schedule.
They've got to do a full red by um offer that we threw at them and nothing's getting.
Paul's kind of in that corner.
Okay, so here we are, ten o'clock, let's look at this.
Make a motion, open a public hearing.
Second.
There's been a motion made, open the public hearing by Mister Schultz, second by Mister Mulbauer. All in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Was there any written or phoned in objections or comments, I should say?
No, I haven't received anything.
Okay, we have any comments from the theater?
I have no objection.
No objections from our audience?
This merely does not. Solidify any budget, this is just solidifying the max levy rates that we could.
Right.
Propose on our citizens.
Yeah.
If we vote on that, we can't raise them any higher than that.
Yeah.
Well, it's max dollars. Tax dollars. More than eleven.
Right, we're already reach that limit.
That's the maximum amount.
Any questions, Mister Dozark, you're the newest one on that.
No, I guess just what Terry said was that.
It's locked in our dollars. Max dollars.
And they come up with that maximum dollar amount by taking the current valuation, time the maximum levy rate.
Right.
The good chart.
Right, right. And that is so for the two general, general basic, it's three dollars and fifty cents. And supplemental supplemental does not have a cap. It's on need. And so. And because it's on need, supplemental is very specific on what you can spend it on. It's benefits like ipers, like uh, things like that, we we have elections under general supplemental. Um, very specific things can be there, and that levy currently is um a dollar forty. So three fifty for the basic. Dollar forty for the supplemental, and then in rural, the max for rural basic is three ninety five. And the current supplemental is ten cents.
Okay.
Gets us to the four oh five.
To the four oh five, yeah.
Yeah, you got it.
Any questions?
And this all started probably five years ago.
Maybe, maybe, yeah, it's the state felt like. Um, it was another level of transparency to the taxpayers and.
Yeah. I think it, yeah.
Yeah.
Another hook to jump.
Well, I'm guessing there were some issues in probably some counties where.
Yeah.
There was. Why?
I don't know.
Added another step.
Yeah.
Developing a budget.
Cause I mean, rural basic and general basic, they're all, they're capped, they're capped statutorily.
Yeah.
You have to have very specific reasons why. You would go over them, and now with the new legislation posed this year, you can't.
Unless it's a disaster.
Uh, yeah, unless it's a disaster. It is a disaster. It is a disaster.
Bill or disaster.
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 Does that count?
Yeah.
So do we need to come out of public hearing?
Yep, no.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to come out of public hearing.
So moved?
Moved, motion made by Mister Dozark, second by Ms. Hayden. All in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no, chair votes aye. Public hearing.
I will uh.
Pretty close, not.
Quite, yeah, can't make that motion, you see.
At two ten oh five, we had worked low. We are close.
Do we have the address of the county barn, the actual physical address of it?
Why?
So I was gonna go to the deed on it, that would be easier if I had that address.
Um, if you go ask Mary, she'll be there for you. She won't need the address.
Okay, I'll just, she said Mary would be able to look up the deed without. That was, yeah, I was gonna try to get the deed.
Well, it's ten oh five?
Ten oh five. All right, I entertain a motion to uh. For resolution.
Make a motion to approve the resolution uh from the yards of maximum property tax dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Mister Schultz, second by Ms. Hayden. For resolution on the max property tax dollars. Any further discussion, hearing none? Mister Dozark?
Yes.
Ms. Hayden?
Yes.
Mister Schultz?
Hi.
Mister Mulbauer?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Resolution carries.
Thank you. Find your land.
Well, I keep my name.
You gotta scribble her name.
Your name.
There's a name.
Sign your name, Mister Dozark.
It's a little more official. You make a carry sign that.
General.
Do we need to initial up here on the front page?
No.
No?
We'll fill that in for you.
Okay.
It was, it's for how you voted.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have to do anything?
I think so. I think so. Okay, Amy, would you like to come forward so we can begin the discussion? Can't vote before. Increasing our disability insurance benefit.
Yes, so, um, basically right now, the income level cap is capped at a hundred and fifty thousand. And, um, Paul is not quite, his income's not quite there, but when you add the Ipers in, he's just above that limit. So, um, National Ins- Insurance Services asked us if we want to raise that income level. So, cause right now, he's being capped at a hundred and fifty, when he's with Ipers, he's at like a hundred and fifty-one. So, um, just didn't know if we wanted to increase that level, or if we always just wanna keep that at a hundred and fifty. I think when we started the policy, we didn't have anyone
Yeah.
at a hundred and fifty, so we, you know, we just.
What is Cullen's then, cause he's up there too.
Yeah, he's not quite there, I mean, he'll probably be there.
Where it comes since he doesn't have a physically hazardous job or.
He's closer to one twenty, isn't he?
Yeah.
So will that, what would that cost us, what would be extra?
I, I mean, it's, it's not, right now, it's twenty-one, twenty-five, it'll go up twenty-one, fifty-three, so it'll go up like twenty-eight cents. I mean, it's, so it's not about the cost, it's just the, the level, so like, right now, if he were to get injured, they're only gonna give him a benefit of twelve thousand five hundred, when it should be like twelve thousand six hundred and thirty-three or something like that, so.
Gotcha.
Cause your disability, you only get a percent of what your income is, and what this is saying is that you can cap it at one fifty, and even if they earn two fifty, that's the most that that disability insurance company will pay.
Right.
Is that one fifty.
And I think when we started the policy, we just.
We had no one.
We didn't have anyone at that amount, but now that we do, I'm just asking, do we wanna increase it? I mean, I don't know if we wanna increase it to two hundred, two fifty, I mean, I don't know.
I don't think we'll have anybody two fifty, for God.
Over time.
Yeah, it just, it just happens, but.
Yeah, but most of our people that are that high are salary.
What would your recommendation be to raise it to?
You don't know what the added cost would be, to go to two hundred or to go to two fifty.
No, yeah, I mean, it, the only, there's no added cost, it's just, you know, what, just need to know what you want the income level to be. Cause like I said, right now.
Figure with the Ipers and stuff like that, so, but we're just at one fifty-one with Paul.
Right.
Which is probably.
And that's with the Ipers, cause that's how the disability works, it's with the Ipers.
Yeah.
And we.
I mean, we.
I mean, we can leave it as it is, but those, those higher salaries just know that they're not going to have their full sixty percent, they'll be like at fifty.
Fifty-nine point seven or something.
Is this something that is renewed every year?
Um, every two years.
Every two years.
Yep.
I mean, I'm sure they wanna go, what, what increments would they, would a five thousand dollar, like, go to one fifty-five, or you have to go to one seventy-five or two hundred, is there any?
Well. Right, and I feel like every time, you know, like now.
Three percent increase on a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, I mean, we're gonna be coming back doing this all the time.
To the next level.
Excellent, excellent.
Well, you know what I'm saying?
She's saying that doesn't really cost, it's not like it's per thousand, you pay more.
Right.
Three percent of one fifty is forty-five hundred, so in ten years, it'd be at one ninety-five.
So, right, we take it to one seventy-five.
Don't murder me this early in the day.
One seventy-five.
Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion, we raise it to one seventy-five, so we don't have to do it every year that our.
And if you, if we do, I guess I'll just, did you second?
I did not.
Okay.
Did you?
Yep, okay.
I, I, I will second.
Okay.
And then we'll go to questions, and I can ask a question. Discussion.
Discussion.
But, um, raising it to one seventy-five, I guess my question is, is that it doesn't, they don't take into account the number of employees the county, the county has, just the number of employees. I guess what I'm asking is that we're only charged, okay, I'll back up again, the county pays a hundred percent of the disability for every employee.
Correct.
So, our cost would only go up for your, the more that people make, our cost goes up.
Right.
So if we cap it at one fifty, once they would make more than one fifty, our cost would stay the same.
Right.
And now ours will go up only for those employees that are over that amount, up to one seventy-five.
Right.
Based on that motion.
Unless we get a renewal rate that goes up, I mean.
Didn't you have a number that two dollars, what, what did you tell anyone?
So right now, his amount is twenty-one, twenty-five, and if it goes up to the level that he should be at, it would be twenty-one, fifty-three.
Let's not.
Right, I just, I was just by, in my thought process, I just didn't want the insurance company to say, okay, now that you're raising that amount to one hundred and seventy-five thousand, it could be that way for every employee, your overall rate is going up.
Right.
But since we pay per employee, and we pay a hundred percent of it.
Yeah.
I understand that we're only gonna pay that little bit extra for anybody that would exceed the current minimum or maximum of one hundred and fifty thousand.
And our rate actually has gone down, our long-term disability rate has gone down from when we first got this policy. Um, and so it's, we pay point zero zero one seven on every thousand dollars, so, um, we have never actually had an increase on that route, so the only time the, it, there's an increase is when there's a raise.
Okay. Got you, thank you.
Okay, outstanding, so we have a motion by Ms. Hayden, and a second by Mr. Dozark, is there any further discussion? Hearing done? All in favor, states so by saying aye.
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 Oppose no, chair votes aye. Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Our attention.
Yep. Keep this on top of thing. Alright. And fifteen, tax abatement.
So, yeah, this is kind of a little complicated.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so familiarize yourself with Dow City.
Yep.
Highway thirty, the trailer court that's along the tracks there.
Yeah.
This piece actually lies outside the city limits, in the rural area, the, the, the triangle piece highlighted.
Okay.
Oh.
So he built a storage unit there, and about five foot of the corner sits in the city limits. So, and then the other ninety-five foot sits outside. So he originally went to the city of Dow City and got a building permit, a tax abatement, and a, um, annexation, um, requ- request. So he did the right thing. So, then he finds out that, um, well, maybe we should, um, because ninety-five percent of it's in the rural, we should, so he got a rural building permit, and an urban revitalization or tax abatement, and said that he intends, he's trying to get it annexed, and Dow City, and Dow City was wanting to annex it. So then they find out they're within two miles of area. So within, so then they have to have permission for annexation from Aryan City Hall, or the city government. So, this has been about eight months in the working, so Nick's done, he's communicated every month or so with me. And so, um, so Aryan has granted him that, so now the ball's back in Dow City's court. If this gets annexed, then our tax abatement would not be applicable.
Okay.
Cause it would be in there, but, to be fair with him, we should probably approve the tax abatement on it. And, um, because he did jump through the hoops the proper way.
Yep.
And see what happens, I, I can't imagine them not, um, annexing it, but, you know, if it gets passed, um, I think, was it July one, that you and I can't do much about it then, Terry? We have to leave it assessed in the rural.
Probably.
Yeah, so, so, just to plan ahead, you know, we probably should do it that way.
I have a question, is the tax abatement for the city of Dow City the same as what the tax abatement is?
It's a little bit better because it's a five year.
Okay.
Versus a three. Yeah, guessing that's the initiative for annex it. And it's not, you know, it's a, if I remember correctly, a hundred and ten thousand dollar storage buildings, so assessed value, so it's not like it's a, a million dollar property. And the problem being, you know, when the building sits on both in the city and outside the city, this isn't the only building in Crawford County that way, but there's a few out there, so. My recommendation would be to grant it, and we'll just have to play it by year if, um, by the statutory dates, you know, if the city annexes it, then it goes to them, if not, we'll apply it and go from there.
I'd make a motion that we approve the tax abatement for, for two, five, due by twelve, these folks, to Dow City.
Sorry.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Hayden, signed by Mr. Schultz.
What's the amount on that?
So the building, it, it has to be more than a hundred thousand dollars to, um, qualify for the county abatement, and so I think the assessed value is like a hundred and ten, or a hundred and fifteen, or something like that on the building, the improvements. It's just over the threshold.
Are you with the ten percent or the five percent that sits in Crawford County, who is still achieving?
We have ninety-five percent, and then, see, we have the majority.
Right now.
So we've got. So I'm with that.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking it's true, even.
So, so it just makes the hundred thousand.
Hundred and ten thousand and five percent of it.
Yeah.
So it.
Yeah, he makes it through.
How much are we actually paying?
Pardon?
How much are we actually paying?
Minimum.
I would have to look, I think the assessment was right at a hundred and ten or a hundred and twelve.
Will it be a three-year full?
Abatement for the house.
Yeah, sorry, would be the three-year hundred percent, that, thanks for asking, I'm in good shots there.
Cause they, do they have this choice of doing, you know, a certain.
There's a five-year percentage or a three-year hundred, yeah, pretty much everybody takes the three-year over, which is better for us, cause the.
He's good, he's good like twelve hours.
Okay, it's not easy.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Do you got it all scribbled down, ma'am?
Yes, I'm more accurate there.
Have you read my notebook?
I, I, I would think if you're not a matter of waking.
Usually one person that needs to read.
Megan.
Okay, all in favor, states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, chair votes aye.
Thanks for.
Chair.
Sticking with me on that way down the bottom for the next, I knew it was, it was gonna get complicated, I just knew.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stamps?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted you.
Yeah.
Be in your office after this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, oh my. We better wait two minutes to get to our citizens' input.
Yeah, you're, you're creeped on them all today.
You know, I have never seen.
First time for everything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, citizens' input.
And I, and I have talked to.
Mr. Mus, do you have any comments to make?
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
I guess, just on some of the activities of the legislature, um, I've talked to Tony Smith, who's the supervisor, who's in here, it's Friday night last week. And, and that whole board is kind of enjoying the, the same thing, and I asked him, and of course, they're all Republicans, or, or doing Republican, and I asked him, how do you guys feel if this, you know, if the Democrats are controlling the legislature, and we're telling you exactly what to do, you know, would you, would you get mad a little bit sooner? Because it seems like at some point, there's gonna be a lot of things to be mad about.
I don't know, I could do it any sooner, cause as soon as I heard, I was peeved, so.
You better, you better sell off the county farm pretty soon, cause then once they find out you've got some asset, they're gonna, they're gonna pay.
They're gonna want it.
Oh, boy.
Or take it, you're right.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on down there.
Just sitting there, you guys don't need it.
Well, we're gonna have it on a discussion next, uh, week, so.
I mean, that's just, I understand your rhetorical point, but I mean, it's just about after everything, our governance and. Yeah, I'm, uh.
You know, as a board, do you really wanna bring, I mean, the, the thing about the compensation board is, it keeps fights away from this board, you won't end up fighting with terror, you're gonna end up fighting with the other elected officials.
We don't fight, we don't fight.
You don't now. But you really wanna bring that in, just, I mean, I don't know if anybody's really.
No.
No, no, that.
I don't wanna feel like I have to fight for a salary either, I mean, you know.
It's exactly the opposite.
Right, it, it may be clumsy now, but at least you're not
It's very clumsy.
getting in each other's throats about these things.
Right, sure, Dan, I really thought the more popular move was to not get rid of the comp board altogether.
Right.
But was to retool or repurpose the comp board and, and try to make it better by having two board members on it with two appointees, and go in that direction rather than, just.
Become more of a negotiation process, similar to what you're doing with the.
Well, yeah, a solid negotiation thing, where, you know, we don't sit here and go, what the heck were they thinking?
Right.
I mean, how many times have we asked that, both years?
And hopefully the numbers that come out of that compensation board are more responsive.
Right, and that's where my question comes in, is exactly, when they say, you have to have a worksheet, are they giving us the worksheet to get the answers, or are we comparing it to other counties? What's the guidelines for the worksheet? Because that worksheet can be extremely. What's the worksheet, you bring your worksheet, and you say, well, I say that the auditor needs a twenty-five percent raise, because the auditor in Hope County is making a hundred, or, you know, I mean, you're not picking a house, you know, you're not gonna fully add up. And that's.
Needs to be based on what I do, not what they do.
Right, right. So the flaw for me is that.
Cause you're not really dealing with any issues, that, I mean, very rarely does anything come before this board where it really matters, any of those things, there's not a lot of, a lot of things that happen here.
I got a C behind my name when I'm sitting here, Crawford.
But, yeah, it's mostly a rhetorical question, but.
No, that's it, you know what, it, it brings up the point about where, when we were talking about juvenile detention, you know, we, Kyle and I look at it every time we go to those meetings, where we're struggling to deal with these kids. And I just worry, there'll be less emphasis from a personal level, I mean, I, I just don't see the state having the same concerns that we, you know, I mean, we're worried about it every time we're there, I mean, whether we're worried about the kids themselves, I mean, we watch Nate over there working his butt off to try to find ways to help these kids, as opposed to just throw them in a closet and forget about them, you know?
Mental health care in this state isn't in a better place than it was a decade ago.
And, oh.
Yeah.
Dan, I feel like everything's coming full circle, and we've all talked about this, where states coming in, they're taking over all these local controls, they're gonna put their thumb on it, this is, we want the assets, we want control, and then it's gonna come back to, oh, it's too much, we need boots on the ground, we need those locals to tell us what we don't see, and then it's gonna flip back the other way, and they'll say, here it is, make it work.
Wheels will fall off the wagon.
Right.
Wheels will fall off.
It's cyclical, just like.
Then we're, instead of working on something that we're continuously improving, now we just gotta go back and fix the mess that they've made, and I mean, we're all, we're, it don't matter who's sitting down there, this is, this has been a concern of all of us.
The problem with the wheels falling off the bus, when they talk about, uh, mental health, is they're talking about people. They're not talking about numbers, they're talking about real life people, they're living it every day, and when the doors are shut, that you can't get in to get the help that you need, because you don't fit that criteria that the state set out, not realizing what our need is here in Crawford County.
They're just numbers to the state.
Well, that's why I wanted to point out that those wheels are people. And, uh, and that's the emphasis I've had since day one, that somebody, some big issue's gonna happen, it's gonna be a person that didn't get the help they needed, they went to this agency crying for help, and, oh, you don't check this blank, you're gonna have to go here. And because they have a mental illness, the coping skills, and, and that's when the wheels fall off the bus.
Dan, I like Lucas Binkin at ISAC, his theme for this year's legislation session is, we're gonna legislate till it's good and broke.
Yeah.
And it kinda makes sense.
You know, I get what some of their trying to do is trying to get, get the purse strings tightened up, and get us, get, get the budgets down, I, I, I mean, I understand their objectives, at least I think I do.
How can we get any lower?
I mean, to get, to get people to come into Iowa, you know, we're, we're not a prime vacation destination, but we're wanting to move industry and people into Iowa, I think that's part of their objective, but I don't, I think, one of the biggest sells in Iowa is that we're people first in that, I mean, we're about, you know, build it and they'll come, and we're about those things, about the folks, you know, I mean, and, and if you, if you make it too cold and, and clinical, I mean, I don't know that it'll, you, you'll lose the effect of beautiful countryside and the people that go with it, you know?
Well, we've seen it happen already with the new building we bought up in Sioux City, and they, you know, see one person, you know, because they, they were either too dangerous, or, you know, too aggressive, and, uh, shut the door on them, and then they end up in the jail.
I think the further you get away from where the wheel meets the road, you lose the personal touch, and I think that's, we're still where the wheel meets the road, we're mixed with everybody every day of the week, you know, you go to Des Moines, you're, you're, you're a step away from everybody when you're out making legislation, you know, I'm sure a lot of people show up at their door down there, mind you, but, you know, you go up to Washington, and it's even worse, you know, and all you do is have professional lobbyists and the people that come along to just give a good story every now and then, you know, I mean.
Well, it'd be nice to know what the legislature's tenure plans is, and have them tell you what it is, and then they can stick to it, because it does seem that every year, oh, this is what we're doing, you know? We, we didn't tell you that, oh, yeah, yeah, well, here's what we're doing, we're gonna get a picture of all these things, and then a year from now, it'll be.
Like I said a little earlier, we gotta give them something else to work on, so.
You can get a sixteen-hundred page bill and go and pass it, and then read what was really in it, that's, you know.
Right, I got a real good idea for it, I think they should take Texas's, uh, state house example, and every other year they need.
Slow down what they can do to us.
Slow down the wheels of progress.
Anyway, I don't know, I'm, I don't wanna.
We had all the answers.
They're.
Yeah, that's why it's a citizen input.
We're frustrated too, Dave.
But it seems like redundancy is something that they're looking at, they're gonna condense things, and at what point do we really need ninety-nine county?
You're right. You're right.
I've already asked that question.
Original notes. Kind of funny how this is all.
The virus, that's probably gonna save us a lot of money there.
I mean, they can, they can give all thumbs. It seems like you guys can, uh.
We think so, I don't know if it'd be just.
Things change a little.
We start looking for properties where it's nice and warm and sunny, most of them get ahead of the game, when they, when they just close their courthouse.
One of the Pearson County supervisors was talking to some, somebody in the legislature, and, and I don't remember the exact story, but they were noting that they had a lot of, you know, their courthouse, they gotta need courthouse, right? Enjoying going there, and, uh, the legislator said, you know, you should just get rid of it, because a tin, a tin shed would be a lot easier to maintain, and it was not kidding.
Let's talk to the same Capitol building down there, too.
Oh, yeah.
That one's got construction scaffolding on it, the rest, more than the rest of it.
Your's got something going.
Yeah, but.
I think we're probably more cost-defeated than they are.
Can a county succeed from state?
Haven't we tried it?
Well, there should be a convention of counties, huh? There's a convention of states.
My golly, you guys should probably bring that up tonight, or tomorrow.
Can we have a convention of counties?
Alright, so anyway, Dave needs to use the restroom. Thank you for your input.
They're working on that piece real quick.
I guess we aren't a journey.
Nope, we're not a journey.
We're gonna give Dave a chance to go relieve his coffee, Chuck.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I'm using the same book now.
Dan, you're welcome to stay.
And if I go back to page. That's what we all started talking about, doing regions being the business model and being county. And I was kinda switching. Will the regions go away?
Of course they will.
There was a point in time where they talked about how many regions they had and how many they were gonna possibly get down to. On page six, okay. And that's how far, that's how long ago they started talking about, would we, you know. We nail it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Who's making you say, Kyle? It's time for the happy films.
I don't think they'll help.
Oh, really?
I mean, the, the, the whole.
Oh, I, I was talking about, just in case Chuck is. We have some happy films down there.
Did you pass it around?
Oh, no, I was holding on, no, because I just thought I'd like.
Yeah, cheaper, mine would just.
I wasn't trying to go very, I just was, yeah, wasn't, wasn't busy trying to, I was just doing.
Well, you actually did it.
I don't believe a word of it.
I've got it, Natalie's little poodle, he is, uh. You don't leave, like, I get some of them damn little slip your feet in, slipper clog things. And if you leave him sitting by your chair, there'll be one or two missing. He's just.
He doesn't destroy them, does he?
Nope, just steals them and puts them by the door, they're supposed to be by the door, apparently.
Natalie probably trained him.
Maybe that's what happened, I wish I could get him to drag my boots back.
It's probably bigger than he is.
Oh, sorry, Nate.
Got your toy back?
Yeah.
We're set.
Alright.
Y'all ready? Wanna sit down?
Ready, let go, join the party.
If you got questions, ask.
We do.
Throw a lot of numbers at us.
Not yet, we're not shy.
We'll throw a lot of numbers at you. The, the thing I handed out first here, just start, start on that, that's moved by department.
Yes, sir.
Good on the sides, that's departments. And a couple of years of history on the right hand side.
Let, let Mister, give Mister Dozer a chance.
So Chuck, when, when it's, when you have on the top, and it's got totals, and then budget, it's got twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-four. I guess, what does that mean?
So that should be twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay.
It's the new budget year, that's the, the budget we're working on.
I don't know, there's two years combined.
No, it is not, that would be very confusing.
Okay.
This is just hot off the press.
Hot off the press.
Alright.
We do have white out.
And then, and then the re-estimate just means that that's what we're planning on spending up until, was it? Of this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it did change a lot from.
And, and the re-estimate numbers come from, um, what were they before, I mean, what was, how often do you do this?
Once a year.
Once a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, unless they have an amendment.
Right.
Right.
But it would all change.
Yeah, and we've had one amendment this year.
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
And are planning the next one.
I got them, sorry, two columns.
What?
Twenty twenty-two, the next column, too.
That one should be twenty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three. But this one should be twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah.
So, so for instance, like I serve on the Wesco board, so like, where does we give money to Wesco in this budget?
Out of Department fifty-one.
General Services.
Right, yeah.
General Services.
Yeah, a lot of things are in there.
Okay.
All, all about twenty-eighty or.
All the twenty-eighty, so imagination.
Remember last year, that one sheet, when we like. CDC.
CDC, okay, what's that?
I got something for that.
Okay.
Everybody's gonna get a handout.
We give it to them? I don't either, they can look at these small pages, because that's the Department fifty-one. Okay.
Sorry, he has my, uh, ruler.
Don't dig in the shit. We give you some guidance, I know. So there's some. I know you, I know y'all, I know y'all, just like, I know y'all.
I know y'all.
Why don't you grab, uh, the ones that are stapled to this girl?
Yeah, the short papers in the back that are stapled.
Follow them?
Yes, out of that paperclip group, I just, it was handed out, there's a stapled bunch that are small like this.
It's a general services part of that.
Got it.
Good lead-in, Craig, good job.
Way to get right into the meat and the potatoes.
Okay, so, we did this sheet form once already, let's do it. Terry, you might update it, information, so. And then it'll probably be in the twenty-four.
Is this with the new numbers?
Yes.
That's what we decided on.
Twenty-four is the new stuff, though, the very right column.
Yes, ma'am. We, we estimated the twenty-three, and the twenty-four is proposed.
Yep.
So, like Craig's question, what's going in, probably in the Health and Social Services.
Yep.
That's central development. And there's, uh, sixteen thousand, that's County Volunteer EMS. That's a new.
Take that out.
Didn't I tell you that yesterday, that they're, yeah, so, we can take it out?
Yeah.
Take what out?
The sixteen thousand.
Get on the route of.
Yeah, I don't.
You gotta find out if you can.
That's true.
I don't know if you can.
We're gonna leave it in till we know, huh?
Well, I can't remember, no, we can amend, because it, it'll, you were planning on it coming out of the tower fund, were you?
Yeah.
So I just take that out.
Yep.
Well, we gotta get some lower anyways, so sixteen thousand.
Up to you guys.
That's out.
Scratch.
Scratch.
We, while we're scratching. Are we still?
There we go. You haven't been in here in a while, Chuck.
Social Service.
Yeah. White out, eraser.
Say that again.
Tell them, social services.
Yeah, we get.
By request.
They are by request. Region twelve, the transit bus and stuff, I don't know that we have a choice. Do we, Chuck?
Because we entered into it, you know.
Because we're in a, yeah.
Is that the bus that like runs down to Harlem?
Yeah, no, no, those are, it's, yeah.
Just runs here?
Yeah.
We have a little shadow by Fairway.
Alright.
The, the, the one that runs to Idarrove or Harlem, those were, we.
Those are job shuttle buses.
We, we facilitate, we were the fiscal agent or whatever.
Originally, and now they've. They've grown up and flown the coop, and they're doing their own thing.
We don't give any.
Fund it anymore, just by, you know.
And we never funded them, we were just a pass-through agent.
Right, we were a pass-through, yeah.
Is, is that?
Do the companies mostly fund it themselves? That makes sense, yeah. I hate shipping people out of Dennis and why don't we need people there and then ban them.
Picked up here in Walmart, and then get home and.
They don't pick them up at Walmart anymore, they pick them up out at the, the last and last hill Bob Gerst.
Right, what if, okay. Back to the budget, these numbers are, are requested, so, most of them have flexibility as to. What you actually approve to fund.
All, not just the ones in Health and Social Services.
Most of them, I would say most of them.
Like the CDC appropriation, yeah, we, they asked for sixty.
They asked for more money to fund that position.
And I.
And.
I still think fifty's plenty, but that's my opinion.
Right.
But we could debate that now, if we wanted to.
Right, you all can, can discuss these numbers and make adjustments. Yes, correct.
The daycare center and building maintenance, and we're locked into that with the twenty-eighty. Those can't really change, because that's.
Right, I, those are one of the ones that can't really change, I don't think.
Too much history there.
Yeah, there's a lot of history there, but that, like, Council Against Domestic Abuse, that's a request. The, um, Center Against Abuse, that's a request, Elder Bridge, that's a request. Um, mowing weeds, we actually have someone that goes to the county cemetery, which is South Bavarian. And mows that once a month, um, starting in May. I think it's May through August, just ahead of Labor Day, and that's probably the last mowing it gets, so five times.
Is there a reason like that we have someone do that and not just have the county employee drive a truck out there with a mower and mow it?
We'd have to pay someone, anyone, I mean.
Right, I mean.
So secondary roads would. Right.
Do you feel like we get our man? Council Against Domestic Abuse and Center Against Abuse and Elder Bridge? I mean, hell, we don't even.
Did you break my fence?
I, I thought Elder Bridge was a good one.
We do, you know, for that, what the, when she has her presentation for what we give.
Money ahead with what we.
It just really seems like.
What about the Center Against Abuse and Council Against Domestic Abuse?
Throw those away behind you?
Certainly.
Thank you.
No problem.
You don't have to rush.
And are those funds then contracted?
Say it again.
Center Against Abuse and Council Against Domestic Abuse get funds from us, then are they contracted through public health to provide those services?
I don't know that, I don't think so.
I don't, I think they're separate.
I think they are separate.
Are they, are they kinda redundant, or?
No.
Center Against Abuse, we haven't given to in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two.
Right.
Isn't that the gal that, I've always, I've seen her here the last couple of years. But don't those funds kind of go for someone who finds themselves, uh, uh, needing help? And they can help them get housing and help them, uh, get back on their feet, and I don't believe, you know, that we have an agency with. You know, unless you have a diagnosed mental illness, that's where that comes in, this would be somebody who's, you know. Yeah, and they're, they're perfectly fine, but they just have no place to go, and they've got children, and so. For that dollar amount, if we can continue that program so that people don't have to stay in that kind of a situation. But I think the difference is that they're not mentally ill, and they're not on any programs necessarily, it's a temporary place they find themselves.
The lady that was beat with the one that took her wife.
Or a guy, guys. Yes, yes, absolutely, but guys are getting meat these days too, I understand.
But, in my mind, I don't mean, I, I bring it up because I don't want to go staff somebody in Sioux City that we see no advantage without a care, if they help somebody here.
Right.
We do have agencies come through.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I guess when they were here, they did show that, what they.
Yes, the numbers of people that, uh, probably need that. So I would hate to, you know, for that, to tap that whole way, where there's no place to go. And I think the difference between those two things is that it's not a history of mental illness, they've not been diagnosed, they just find themselves, whether it be. Male, female, um, uh, so, I would.
Do they, do they do different things, I mean?
Yes.
Do we know that they?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it not, you know, they're redundant in Centers Against Abuse and Council Against Domestic Abuse?
That was what I asked.
Right, I mean, one asked for fifteen thousand, we gave them ten, and then we put five to the other one, so a total's fifteen, so. Is that one place, you know, getting the fifteen, but now they just split it up? As to how they ask it to try to make sure that they get it, or, that's, that's my only question, I guess, and then you can kinda see. How, maybe you could, we just had this talk about the governor and the legislature, sometimes you wonder this, what they look at. Going out to the counties, they go, well, look at, these look like they're doing the exact same thing, why don't we just combine them?
Right.
You know?
The people that come to. Order, find that out.
And, and Dave, you're on the region twelve, but I'm assuming that region twelve has. Different specific programs, which is why we have money that goes to them for transportation, why we have money that goes to them for housing, they're specifically.
Region twelve, if you look at like an organization chart, they have region twelve, and then they have all these organization units underneath that are transit, housing. Uh, grant writing.
Specifically give each one of those.
So they always have different.
Yeah, we're all involving loan fund.
And those matching funds only go out if there is funds. A program to match to, isn't that, is that kinda right, yeah?
So, and we're not spending those region twelve funds right off the bat, it's, but it gives you the spending authority if they do, are needed.
And then on the, on the top, as far as the, the daycare center building maintenance, I think that was the twenty-eighty sign between county, city, and the school. And then above that, the agency, their daycare service, debt service.
And I think that debt's paid off.
It is.
But I think all that money actually goes into building maintenance, because they've had a lot of.
That's what I thought.
The building's been depleting lately, and, so, yeah.
Because we give them thirteen thousand, I think that all goes into maintenance, now that I went to my first meeting. And, um, they do spend that.
Yeah.
As an example, you know, the, the original refrigerators, freezer have been in there since the beginning, it, it shelled out, we had money available to replace it with a.
Oh, already? Oh, my goodness.
Carpet is worn out.
And five thousand times three entities, fifteen thousand a year, hasn't kept up with the maintenance needed, when you talk about expanding this project, sir.
You know, our, our door locks were getting bad, and they're, you know, the many lines were looking like kids had been hanging on them.
Yep, so like West Central, they've requested that four thousand. You can not do the whole four, you can, you know what I mean? You can make decisions like that.
Central, though, that, I mean, for bang for buck.
Right.
We get way more back for.
Let's just say with Elder Bridge.
Elder Bridge is another one of them, that's, it's like a no-brainer, dude.
Yeah.
And Elder Bridge is actually a formula that they use to develop that number. And, you know.
Yeah.
So, I, those two are just.
You wanna put them all together?
No, I don't, I don't think they need to be together, just, they're, uh.
Different description, they cannot use them for debt.
I, I think it's just, oh, that.
Oh, for daycare.
Oh, maybe that way.
Yeah, we could move it all to the building maintenance line.
And most of them on here, you seem like you do get good bang for your buck on what we're getting back in return.
Yep.
But probably sooner than later, you're gonna have to decide how many of those good deals you can afford.
Right.
Well, depending on what this legislation does to our future budgets.
You're right.
Is all I'm saying.
You're happy with Gary Jones on HIPAA consultant?
Yep.
Yeah, so I inquired to, um, Hill, Aaron Hillgas and Alers and Cooney about services from them. And, um, after a little bit of time, if we were to put all of our union stuff together with our. HR consulting and HIPAA consulting, it would be about twenty-five hundred a month. Which is quite a bit more than what we pay currently for, so currently HIPAA consulting is a thousand a month. And Gary, or, um, Jack Reed is what's? It's five, I think it's five fifty, it's going up to six fifty, July one of.
And then a year.
Um, so that's only, that's what.